Good evening. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to bring the special town meeting of December 5th to order. I said at this time, I'd like to bring the special town meeting of December 5th to We'll go over a few safety items in case of an evacuation or a fire alarm and we need to exit the building. You can exit the two exits you came in. There's an exit to my left and right up front, and the quickest way is to leave and go right and go out the main doors. I'd like everyone to silence your electronic devices so we can have a nice orderly meeting without a lot of noise and phones going off, please. I'm also going to enact the three times up, two-minute rule for this meeting. And at this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to let everyone know that the constable's return of the warrant was perfectly good and served on time. All right. Article 1, please.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to request to waive the reading of Article 1.
All right. That's fine. I'm good with that. So, do you have any other comments on, from the advisory? Do you have any comments?
As this is a citizen's petition, advisory takes no position for or against because it is a citizen's petition. However, members of advisory may speak during the meeting as private citizens.
Sir, who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Noel Francis, 14 State Road, Chair of the Advisory Committee.
Thank you. All right. So, I move to adopt the article as it's written. I'll need a, I need a motion and then a second.
Second.
I need, Julie, do you want to?
I'll second it.
No, motion it.
Yeah.
Okay. I heard a second out there. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Do you have anything, since you're the motion maker, if you have anything you want to say?
At this time, I'm going to reserve my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We'll open up the floor to discussion on Article 1. Questions?
Mr. Moderator, Rachel Herman, 41 Pleasant Street. I move that we allow a visitor who has come from Northampton and who has special knowledge of this matter to speak. I can introduce her briefly and then find out if there's a second. Yes?
Okay. We have to vote, because she's a non-citizen, we have to vote if, if everyone, would everyone like to hear a special guest speaker?
Yes.
Say yes. Any knows? Okay. You go ahead, please.
All right. I would like to introduce Ella Carlson. She is the Presentations Associate of the Climate Reality Project as part of their Science, Solutions, and Policy Team. She is a resident of Northampton and would speak to, briefly, to the history, science, and health issues of plastics pyrolysis.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. The plastics and petrochemical industries tout chemical recycling as a green solution to the enormous plastic waste crisis felt globally. Brands like America's plastic makers claim that advanced recycling is a viable technique to achieve sustainability and circularity in plastics, where they are, quote, "remade into new plastics and can be remade again and again," unquote. In reality, advanced recycling is mainly used to produce fuel, not additional plastics. The process uses an immense amount of energy and creates large amounts of toxic waste. No matter how the industry spins it, combustion is happening. Proponents of chemical recycling claim that oxygen is removed from the chamber in the facility that is pyrolyzing the plastic, and therefore, the facilities are not burning material and are not incinerators. In reality, the vast majority of plastics are made from fossil fuels, and the plastic feedstock that these facilities produce use oxygen and combustion, even in pyrolysis and gasification chambers. In addition to the products developed by this process, the plants also produce toxic char, liquid effluent waste, and emissions. For every ton of plastic, nearly three tons of CO2 are emitted in plastic-to-fuel operations. In 2023, the EPA reiterated that these facilities are classified as incinerators and must adhere to Section 129 of the Clean Air Act. Furthermore, these facilities release toxic pollution. Advanced recycling during its burning process releases carcinogens, neurotoxicants, cardiovascular toxicants, and numerous other hazardous pollutants. The toxins released from the advanced recycling process are shown to have extreme health effects, including harming reproductive health and causing respiratory and neurological cancers. This pollution is incredibly dangerous. The EPA reportedly found that pollution from an associated plastic-based fuel could pose a 1-in-4 risk of cancer. The environmental effects are just as extreme. A study published by the American Chemical Society in 2023 found the economic and environmental metrics of pyrolysis and gasification, including water use, energy use, waste generation, emissions, and toxicity, are 10 to 100 times higher than virgin polymers because of the low yields of monomers for repolymerization and the high energy inputs. Rather than continuing our dependency on fossil fuels and adding more plastic and plastic waste to our planet, we should instead be advocating for alternative, truly sustainable materials. Please say no to a chemical recycling facility in Templeton. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments on Article 1?
My name is Susan Carlson. I've lived here for 49 years. I would like the people on the stage...
Street, please.
I would like the people on the stage to introduce themselves and tell us what their role is here.
Excuse me, ma'am. I need your name and street.
Thank you.
I need your name and street.
Susan Carlson, 26 Bridge Street, Baldwinville, Massachusetts, 01436. Could you please introduce yourselves and tell us what your role is here?
Good evening. I am Mike Currie, Chair of the Select Board.
Good evening. My name is, my name is Matthew Reevard. I am the Vice Chair of the Select Board.
What's your street?
They don't have, they don't have to name their street.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming. Teresa Griffiths, Member of Select Board.
Good evening. Tim Toth, Member of the Select Board.
Advisory, do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
John Kaplis, Member of the Advisory Committee.
Jacqueline MacHumber, Clerk of the Advisory Committee.
Noel Francis, Chair of the Advisory Committee.
Andrew Moser, Vice Chair, Advisory Committee.
I'm John Graves. You're moderator. This is Carol Harris, your Town Clerk, and this is Ryan. You just got me. Homequest. She's our Town Council. Are there any more questions on Article 1? Questions? Comments on Article 1? Go ahead, please.
My name is Dale Spencer, 16 Water Wheel Circle in Templeton. I was just curious as to why our elective officials have decided that a 12-month moratorium is all that is needed. It seems to me that this should be a permanent thing since we've had incinerator issues in the past, and that would save all these good people who have a vested interest in coming back here again for this.
You want to answer, Mike? Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Moderator, Mike Currie, Select Board. To the gentleman that just spoke and to everybody in the audience, this article is a citizen petition. This is what you've asked for. I believe there was, what was the, the signature count for this? 236? Approximately 236 signatures on the petition, and that was enough, that was well over the 200, that you needed to be able to hold this special town meeting. So, the article that, that you have, it's from the people. It's, it's exactly what New England Town Meeting and all of the process is, is meant to do. So, the fact that you're sitting here is a testament, not to the elected officials that who called the meeting, but to you, who wanted this in front of town to be able to vote. Additionally, the conversation didn't start with this. The conversation, as you know, has been going on for years. The property that started this and has brought this to the forefront is an ongoing issue. It is a one-year moratorium. There are a lot of factors that go into this, to this property and foreclosures and otherwise, and I hope that comes out tonight, but a one-year, at least from the petition, the people who signed the petition, would deem sufficient in order to follow along with the language that's in it.
Go ahead, please.
Noel Francis, 14 State Road, Baldwinville, Chair of the Advisory. I'm speaking as a private citizen because advisory did not take a position on this, and other members may have a different opinion than what I have. I, I live in the area, and I have the potential of being affected just the way all of you who are here tonight. I want to talk a little bit about moratoriums. I did try to look up the law concerning moratoriums in Massachusetts. I, in my search, I did not find anything specific about moratoriums. But what you need to know is this, is at present, there is not a formal proposal in front of the planning board. It's just somebody has purchased the property and talked about, you know, building, you know, this type of a plant. There may not be a proposal in front of your planning board for a year, two years, maybe even longer. It takes a long time to, you know, plan such a plant. I was indirectly involved with the planning of a similar-type plant, and, you know, the whole thing took two to three years. So, I'm suggesting is that a moratorium is really quite premature, because nothing, there's nothing on the table. There's nothing for the planning board to consider. Moratoriums is usually the idea, is that a proposal comes in front of a planning board, and then your planning board, because of the complexity of the proposal, may ask for more time. And generally, in other states with this case law on it, a period of six months is allowed to study it, but if you go beyond six months, you know, it might be, you know, might run into problems. So, in asking for a year, I don't know what the Attorney General's Office may do, but a year is kind of a long period of time to ask for a moratorium. As far as a permanent moratorium, I believe, and this is my own opinion, but I believe that it would not fly in front of the Attorney General. The basic problem that you have is this, is the land, you know, the land at 24 Holman Street has always been zoned for heavy industry, unlimited industry. So, say these people left tomorrow and sold the land, maybe the next purchaser would be a tianeran. Well, it could be located there, or a cryptocurrency plant. It could be located there, or a, a...
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Which point of order? Please, name.
Terry Griffiths. We're talking about a specific property, but this is for all of Templeton.
This is a town-wide moratorium.
The article is about the whole town, whether it's Templeton, Baldwinville, Otter River, the Old Brook Village, wherever. It's for the entire town to keep us, to keep these things out of Templeton, period.
What you don't understand is you have zoning. You know, it allows for uses like that, and you really need to change the zoning. And my basic point is, you need to table it, because if you pass it tonight, the clock starts to run on the one-year moratorium. You table it for a year down the road, and you pass it then, then the clock would start to run a year down the road. It's too early for the clock to start to run. That's my point. You should table it.
Go ahead, please.
Terry Griffiths, speaking as a resident. To my knowledge, Artic...
Your street.
Pardon me?
Your street. Your street you live on, your name and street. Name and street.
Terry Griffiths, 12 Dory Lane. Sorry, I forgot my street. Speaking as a resident, to my knowledge, we passed the moratorium because Article 3 is a bylaw that needs to go to the Attorney General's Office, so it gives us a year to put that bylaw before the Attorney General's Office for approval. That is, to my knowledge, why we need a moratorium at this time, so that the bylaw can get passed. And the reason we need to do it before there is a site permit is because once there's an, oh, sorry, I'm getting off topic, but if there's ever a site permit issued and you don't have this moratorium in place, you cannot do it. If you don't, if you don't have the bylaw in place and somebody takes a site permit out anywhere in Templeton, they can proceed, because we don't have a bylaw in place to protect us from things like this.
Go ahead, please.
Jane Thompson, 62 Winchester Street in Baldwinville. Mr. Francis said that it was a heavy industrial zoning. From what I understand, it's light industrial. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Hi. My name is Joe Emma. I live on Brooks Road in Templeton. I'm retired now, but I spent 25 years in the plastic industry. In my capacity, as Distribution Manager for North America, I traveled all over Canada, U.S., and Mexico, and also parts of Europe. If there's anybody in this room who thinks this is a good idea, let me tell you, it's a nightmare. I've been to some of these plants. They smell. You will have plastic pieces floating all over town. It's a disaster, and there are no good jobs that are provided by these types of plants. They're not, it's not injection molding. We're not making parts here. This is a disaster.
Any more questions or comments on Article 1? Going once? Going twice? Three times? All right, we're going to go, oh, hold on, I got one guy.
I know we want to get through. Stephen Anderson, up on French Road in Templeton. So, if we enact this 12-month now, I know you said the clock starts, what happens at the end of that 12 months? Are we able to renew this or put something else? Is it just buying us time for the bylaw, and then the bylaw is going to be the more permanent protection? I guess, how do we get to a longer-term solution?
Anyone have any answer for that?
To the, whoever can answer that.
Name? Please, name.
Sorry, Mike Currie, Chair of the Select Board. Just, the moderator looked over me for a, my opinion, the board has not talked about the actual, the petition that you've got, but I would say Article 3 is the more robust part of what we're here to talk about tonight. Because it mirrors the State 3701, if people in the room were not aware of that.
Okay.
Okay? They're looking to do this at the state level.
Any more questions or comments on Article 1? Go ahead, please.
Rachel Herman, 41 Pleasant Street, Baldwinville. To the gentleman's point who just spoke, at the very least, a one-year moratorium can be renewed or made more perfect, or possibly made into a permanent ban on this type of industry. Citizens have a right to protect their homes, their health, their families, from harms such as toxic waste. So, there's really, there's no downside to getting this moratorium passed. And I also want to point out that, look around the room, look to your left, look to your right, these are people who are going to be with you at the next battle, and the industry that is planning to try to bring something like this in town is going to realize that it's individuals that have the power, and the town is going to fight them.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street, Baldwinville. Could you please explain what a yes vote means and what a no vote means?
Okay, so...
Thank you.
If we vote yes, then this Article 1, which is a citizen's petition, will, I, I'm not sure if it actually, it has to pass, then it would go forward. If it doesn't pass, then nothing is done. It's just like it never happened.
You didn't answer the question. Yes, is a pass vote? No, is it no vote? We're done here. We want to hear it again.
I'm sorry, dude.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Yeah.
Tim Toth, speaking as a town resident. Folks, this is a citizen petition. You voted to waive the reading. If you do not understand the content, then don't vote this evening. This is your decision. That is the answer. If the vote, what does it say in the petition, sir? I am addressing your question directly.
Explain it in layman's terms.
Terry Griffiths, 12 Dory Lane. Yes, we get the moratorium. No, we don't get the moratorium.
Go ahead, please.
Christine Sargent, 42 Mountain View Street. Someone said previously, two speakers before, that nothing is going on with that property over there at this time.
The moratorium is for the entire town. We're really not discussing properties, because it's not in the article. We're talking about just a moratorium for the entire town of Templeton, whether something's going in someplace around here or not. It would, this moratorium would protect the entire town, every square inch of it. So, we're not, we're not...
Okay.
Do you understand?
No, I respect your answer. However, I'd like to know what's going on at the old building there, the old Temple Stewart, because there is definitely activity. There's an office, mobile office set up.
They've been cleaning that up.
And there is cars there daily. So, people in the crowd has...
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
I have a point of order. Hold on, go ahead.
We are discussing a town-wide moratorium on plastic pyrolysis and the like.
Yeah, that's, the focus is, I understand you have questions, but you can always watch, believe it was discussed at a Select Board meeting previously.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, Terry Griffiths, speaking as a resident, 12 Dory Lane. I request we move the question.
Okay. Move the question, which means we have to vote. I accept your motion to move the question, which means we have to vote on move the question. There's a second out there. Thank you.
We're ready for it.
All right, thanks. Okay, so what that means is, if we, we're going to vote on move the question, which means if move the question passes, we will go directly to a vote on Article 1, so everyone understands how that works.
All right. For what? Move the question?
Okay. And I'll need a two-thirds vote to move the question. So, all in favor of moving the question and going to vote, say yes.
Yes!
Okay. All opposed, say no. Okay, that passed unanimously at 6:26. Give me one second. Okay, we're going to go to vote on Article 1. This is a majority vote. All in favor of passing Article 1, say yes.
Yes!
All opposed, say no. Okay, Article 1 passed unanimously at 6:26. Okay, thank you. Article 2, please.
Mr. Moderator. Article 2, Transfer from Capital Stabilization Account for the Senior Center Kitchen Project. Submitted by the Select Board, a majority vote is required. I move to appropriate the sum of up to $175,000 in no sense from the Capital Capex Stabilization Account to be used for the completion of the Senior Center Kitchen.
Got a second? Thank you. Advisory?
By a 4-0 vote, advisory recommends approval of this article.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Comments? I'll open up the floor to discussion on Article 2. Go ahead, please.
Robert Mary, 137 J.D. Lane. Mr. Moderator, I have a substitute motion for this article.
Do you have it in writing?
Yes, I do.
And signed?
I would like to read it, and then I'll hand it up to you.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. This is just about changing the funding, basically. I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $175,000 in no sense for the construction of the kitchen at the Templeton Senior Center, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of $175,000 in no sense from certified free cash.
Second.
Second, thank you.
Sure.
All right, on the amendment to Article 2, I'd like to open up questions and comments on the amendment to Article 2 that Mister May just presented.
Mike Curry, Select Board Chair. I recommend a no vote for this substitution. Free cash has already been decided. That upsets a lot of different things that the fall town meeting, annual town meeting, and again, probably annual town meeting of next year. It disrupts the use that the town has already voted on. The proposal to use capex is well within the balance of capex and for the design purpose of it. Further, the majority of the kitchen is being funded with ARPA funds, and the bid came in excessively, or higher than we believed. It came in at 319, so the capex is being recommended as the town's funding solution for the sorely needed senior center kitchen that we've been waiting a long time for. I recommend a no vote for this substitution and that you consider, with all earnest, the original motion.
Go ahead, Mister May.
Robert May, 137 Shady Lane. Just so you know, 175 is more than 150, Mike. The majority is coming from tonight's vote. But my point is this, simply, that we are facing either an override or a use of stabilization to cover the budget this coming year. We have $213,000 right now in capex. If we spend this money, we'll have $63,000. We put $70,000 in this year, so we're barely, we're not even maintaining what we just put in last month. And you want to spend the capital stabilization rather than free cash, which free cash is still free cash. There has been no determination on spending. The capital improvement plan has not been finalized. It has not been presented to the town, to the Select Board. And there was last, at last count, in the BBA, there was $481,000 in the free cash account, far more than is in the capex stabilization account. And this is the, the capital issue for the town this year. The number-one issue from the capital improvement plan is a truck, a small utility truck from capex, and then it's the generator for the senior center, which if we don't have the kitchen, we probably don't need a generator. I'm just saying, spending from free cash is more appropriate at this time than capex because if we spend free cash now, we'll still have capex. If we spend capex now, we won't have free cash coming to annual town meeting. It'll be all spent. So I recommend an absolute yes vote to go and use free cash because the town will have options and we're going to need it, from what I see from the management that we've had coming into this. So just a recommendation, please go with free cash.
Go ahead, please.
Diane Haley, 27 Pleasant Street, Baldwinville, Mass. Wow, that's all we have left in free cash from when I was on the board? We also changed, we have a stabilization account, so forgive my ignorance, because we changed the financial policy. Is that an accurate statement?
No.
No? So we just have free cash and capex? I would like that explained to me, please.
Can someone explain that, please?
There are a lot of different accounts, and I think you're forgetting, forgetting them, and the audience is trying to remind you. I know, I'm going to go slow so you can hear. There's capital stabilization, there's capital, there's an overall stabilization fund that's about 1.3 million.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so it's traditionally, the capex is smaller because the contributions to it are smaller.
Okay.
Because this town, normally for capital, capital stuff, is funded by free cash that's certified every year. So if you've paid attention over the years, 2013, zero. We went up in free cash, so we had over a million dollars about 2020, and we're starting to settle back down about $600,000 or $700,000. Why is that? Because our towns are being more efficient with their budget. Their utilization rates are, instead of being 60% or 70% of what they budgeted, are more like 80% and 90%. That's less money that goes back to the state for certification.
Okay.
Okay?
I was on the board when we had a half a million.
I understand, I just wanted to remind you.
Okay, right. Okay, I want to be clear. So, okay, thank you.
You were next, sir.
Evening. Steve Castle, 116 Pale Factory Road, and I'm the Director of Templeton Community Television. I am informed by the town administrator that if free cash is used for the kitchen, there will not be any free cash for TCTV to fund it. And we need to be funded this year or we will cease operations. You will not have videos of meetings on YouTube.
Point of order.
I'm just, I'm just saying that if free cash is used.
What's your point of order?
You may not have TCTV.
Hold on a minute, Steve.
He's talking, he's talking about something that's outside the scope of this particular article.
Well, the thing is, the amendment is taking the money out of free cash.
It has an effect.
It would have an effect, I think. So go ahead, Steve.
So I'm just saying that if you fund this with free cash, you may not have TCTV next year. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Liz Toth, Gray Road. First point of order, Mike, this did not go in front of the board, and you spoke as the Chair of the Board, not as an individual. That's number one. Whether or not you were answering the question, you, you made a recommendation, and you made the recommendation as the Chair, which is inappropriate. Second, our whole financial aspect of how we handle our finances and the fact that we're going to be taking so much out of capex, what does that preclude us from being able to do?
Does anyone have any answer for that? Do you mind me giving you an answer, Liz?
I haven't, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
No, you made a recommendation as.
We're not going to do this back and forth, please. If you're going to answer her, it's your name and street and answer her.
So the capital stabilization fund. Mike Curry, Chair of the Select Board.
No, name of street.
No, he doesn't, no, he doesn't. If he's answering as the Chair, then he can, but if he is answering as a resident, he has to give his street.
So Liz, to answer your question, the capital stabilization fund is there as a stabilization fund. It doesn't sit there with a plan or a stack of things waiting on that. It is a stabilization fund for moments like this when we say we do not have enough to be able to cover all of our capital requirements, so we're going to stabilization to be able to make this appropriation happen. The need is there that ARPA money, for the obligation for it, ends at the end of the year, December 31st. If we don't obligate it on the kitchen with the supplemental funds that it's going to take to get that higher bid of $319,000, then we wind up losing that opportunity. Yes, it's, it's ARPA money that we wind up leaving on the table, but to answer your question, there is not anything that is going to be lacking because we leave all the money in capex stabilization. Does that help? There's not a stack behind it. All the capitals, the capital improvement committee is due to speak to the board this next week on the 11th on what their plan is going to be. Traditionally, most of the source of funding for capital, capital needs is free cash. There are 911 grants and a couple of other things that be able to fund some of those capital needs, but right now, there is no design use for the total amount in the capital stabilization fund.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure, go ahead.
So how much in requests for capital have actually been put forward to the capital, capital committee? It's like 1.1 million?
I'd have to ask. Tim does sit on it. I don't, I don't know what they have. Their, their report isn't until Wednesday, but if, Tim is the Select Board representative for the Capital Improvements Committee, so I don't know what the total amount is.
I'm looking to Tim to please answer that.
Mister Moderator, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
As the Select Board liaison to the Capital Improvements Committee, the totals this year were in excess of $2.1 million as presented. We were told we have $300,000 to $325,000, and the Capital Improvement Committee has been working on that. The final report is not yet finalized. It will be presented next Wednesday. I will assure you, it is going to come in under $325,000. It will be leaving approximately 1.75 million unfunded, and this is just a problem that we keep kicking the can down the road.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Gail Noel, 87 Winchester Street. The article as written was to authorize up to $175,000 from the capex fund, and that is up to 175 because the Friends of the Templeton Elders, we are expecting an amount of money, and that will reduce this, the amount we take greatly.
Elaborate.
We think the Friends will donate up to $60,000 or $63,000 toward the kitchen, which is the amount, which is approximately the amount that was raised for the kitchen between 2015 and 2019. So I, I recommend that we vote up to 175 from capex.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Dan Keeney, 12B Memorial Street. Unless things have changed since I served on the Advisory Committee, there was never an account for free cash. Free cash represents the amount of money that is, amount of revenue received in a certain tax year that exceeds the amount budgeted for that tax year. Before you can spend free cash, it has to be directed to some account, because no account actually exists, or it didn't exist when I was on the board, it may have changed, for free cash. You have to direct it to some spot. Normally, that is, that happens at annual town meeting, and usually, the Advisory Board will make recommendations where that should be distributed. So I don't know if things have changed or not, but you can't spend free cash directly. You have to designate it to an account and then spend it from that account.
Mister Moderator, before Mister May speaks again, I'd like to at least address, because some of the things were directed, he was looking right at me. So you, you say, in front of this audience full of.
Mike Curry, Select Board Chair, I'm sorry. You said, Mister May, before this entire auditorium full of people, that there's likely an override. That is, that is a large statement that you are saying. That is not reality at all, so.
Did you hear what I said?
I, I did hear what you said.
I said an override or.
We're not, hey.
Use of stabilization.
Mike.
Right.
That's not how.
Why did he get to go in front of me?
He's answering, I believe he was trying to explain something to the gentleman that asked the question. That's what I believe.
No, you said, explain to me.
Well, if you just hold on, you can still ask, make your comment, but I'm not going to get into this, you guys yelling back and forth at each other.
I continue to urge that we use capital stabilization funds, and I, the things that Mister May brought up are absolutely not true at all. And to change the fundamental use and how the process goes with free cash on the floor of town meeting upsets the entire process. That stabilization fund is there for exactly what we're proposing it to be. You're saying that it's not, that we have to rely on it because we're going to have an override? That is not true. There was discussion a year ago that we wanted to add personnel to the town. We then saw that the town voted against a debt exclusion, so we knew that this was not going to be a year where we were going to be able to add staff. That's the genesis of you saying that there's going to be an override. We're doing fine, as long as we don't.
Now you've gone beyond answering that gentleman's question.
Okay, thank you.
Please, stick, all right, go ahead, please.
Robert May, 137 Shady Lane. I would like to ask Mister Curry a question. Is there a plan to use the $430,000 towards the budget this year from general stabilization? There isn't.
All right. You want to answer the question?
Mike Curry, Select Board Chair. From general stabilization, there is not. Wait, are you saying this year or for '26?
For '26. For the coming budget.
No, there is not.
Is there a plan right now that you received a letter from somebody saying that $430,000 was going to be used for, yeah, there wasn't.
No.
I got a copy of it.
I'd like to see it, then.
Wow.
There is not a plan to use general stabilization. I'm looking at you in the eye and I'm telling you, there is not.
I know.
Okay.
But you just looked at me in the eye a minute ago and told me what I said was wrong. And I said to use, that's what you're planning. That is a letter that has been put out to use $430,000 from the general stabilization for next year FY '26 budget, which is in lieu of an override. So I'm sorry, you're wrong. And just like you were with the EDIC for seven years. Sorry.
All right.
Yeah, point of order. I just threw it out there.
All right, well.
Okay.
But we can't, look, yeah, you guys, you guys.
Don't tell me to sit down, sir.
This is enough, please. I warned you once, don't, I, this, there's no need for this. If you want to ask him a question, ask him a question.
He just told me to sit down.
I know he did, and that wasn't right.
Could you tell him?
He apologized. All right, so let's try to be civil. Let's be civil. All right. Okay, go ahead, please.
Janice Lefave, 140 Bridge Street. I make a motion to move the vote on the amendment.
Okay, all right, third, okay, we're going to vote to move the question, which means we'll vote on the amendment, not the original, but the amendment. So all in favor, say yes?
Yes!
All opposed, say no?
No!
I think.
They need to tell them that they're voting to move the question.
Yeah, they're moving the question, yeah. I did.
It's a two-thirds.
It's a two-thirds vote, so it didn't pass. All right, well, it's a two-thirds vote, and that didn't pass by two-thirds, so we're going to continue to have discussion on the amendment to Article 2. Do you have a question, sir? On the, no. No, no, I specifically said move the question. We're still on, so everyone's clear, we voted to move the question, because the gentleman asked to move the question. You have to vote to move the question. It didn't pass two-thirds, so we're still continuing to talk about the amendment to Article 2. So go ahead, please, sir.
Mike Mullner, 55 Shore Drive. I heard that we have 1.7 million in unfunded capex, and this is 1.7 that we're, no, I'm sorry, 170,000 that we're proposing to come out of capex. What rose this to the top priority? Why isn't any of the other 1.7 million being proposed? What made this be the priority for this meeting versus other things that are unfunded?
Does anyone have any answer to that?
Mister Chair, I'd like to answer that. That was not what I said, sir.
Tim, name.
Tim Toth, speaking as a member this year of the Capital Improvements Committee. The total sum submitted to capital improvements was in excess of 2.1 million. Capital improvements had a working budget of 300,000 to 325,000. There is a 1.7 million shortfall on everything that was originally requested. Outside and notwithstanding this article, that's just what came in front of the Capital Committee for the last six weeks.
That's what I understand.
So I just want to make sure we understand.
Right, that's, I heard you say that, and I'm wondering why this is a priority over anything else that was unfunded? That's my question.
This building has been unfinished in over 10 years. If we finish the kitchen, the Monticlet Outreach Committee has.
So that was, that was a priority? That was the, somebody made a decision that this was a priority to bring to the town, town meeting, right?
I'm trying to explain that to you.
Versus other things? And so I just.
I'm trying to explain that to you. If we can finish the kitchen, we can provide a warm meal up to five days a week for our seniors in town. So yes, it became a priority.
Okay, I'm not arguing that it shouldn't be. I'm just wondering what the process was to make it the priority over the other things. That's all.
And over the past year, this has been discussed and discussed and discussed ad nauseam. And over the past year, this has been discussed and discussed and discussed ad nauseam.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, please.
And Gail Noel, 87 Winchester Street. And another reason this is a priority is because ARPA funds, $150,000 of ARPA funds are to be dedicated to this. And if we do not vote yes by December 31st, we will lose that $150,000 and then be required to come up with $319,000 for the kitchen. And, which I bet we won't, and we'll just postpone it forever. So we want to take care of the seniors in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Go ahead.
Beverly Bartola Mail, South Road, Templeton. One of the reasons this is a priority is because our administration's, administration staff did not get it together to come to a meeting earlier to get this done. But they've had since 2022 to do this. So now, it's like a really big thing to do. I understood that CapEx was for vehicles. That's what I, it was always when I was on the Advisory Board. So I really think Mr. May is right. It should come out of free cash. Free cash is nothing but a cookie jar. In free cash, you don't get to vote on it all the time. So I really do think that he is right, no matter whether you like it or not. It is what it is.
I will. Okay, thank you. Mr. Moderator. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Moderator, Matthew Revard, speaking as a Select Board member. First thing that I would like to note here is that it is actually not true that free cash can be spent however we feel like it. Free cash must, M-U-S-T, come in front of this body, in front of the people, in order for it to be spent. That's point number one. Point number two is I would like to connect a couple of dots. As Mr. Toth spoke earlier, the Capital Improvements Committee is proposing a little under a 300, has been, was given a $325-ish thousand budget to work on for this year. If the town were to vote to take the $175,000 for the kitchen from free cash, not only does that potentially impact TCTV, it also potentially impacts that budget, meaning $325,000 all of a sudden shrinks, which means other capital expenditures are not fulfilled. So for that reason, please seriously consider what your, what you want this to be. The town has proposed that this come out of the capital expenditure stabilization fund for a reason. Okay? And that's one of the reasons. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Robert Mary, 137 Shady Lane. I just want to clarify a couple of things that were said here, but to straighten them out a little bit. When another member here stated that there's $60,000 that would be coming from, potentially from the Friends of Templeton Elders to lower this 175, I just want to say that's not accurate. Because the 175, if we vote it tonight, the 175 is coming out of CapEx, and $60,000 if they bring it back, that's going to the general fund. That's not going to go to CapEx, it's not going to go refill CapEx, it's not going to go to any of those places. It's just going to go into the general fund, which if it's not spent this year, will become free cash next year. You know, we're spending, with this bill right here, with this article that we're presenting, and what we have for capital, free ca, CapEx plan over here of $325,000, we're spending more than we actually have in free cash. Because we have $481,000 in free cash, and we're spending $500,000 on capital items, which I don't think is a wise idea. We have a number of issues that have been stated that I disagree with, and that's fine. Never mind, I'm done.
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, please.
Matthew Revard, Select Board. I would also like to note that the original article that was proposed for this, the text is, "I move to appropriate the sum of up to $175,000." Meaning, if we do get donations for the Senior Center kitchen from other sources, that number can be reduced, and it stays in the capital expenditure stabilization account. The reason we did not discuss any sort of potential donations is because we do not have them in writing yet. And we do not discuss anything that's theoretical. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Moderator, to the point that was just stated by Mr. Revard, we have to have this contracted by December 31st. Do we have any indication that we will have the money from Friends of Templeton Elders in the next 10 business days?
Matthew Revard, Select Board. Mr. May, again, we will not speak in theoreticals. We don't have anything in front of us at the time being, and I can't speak anything further than that. It's, the donation is theoretical until it's in front of the Select Board for it to be approved, so I can't, I can't say anything about it other than that.
Agreed, so it's moot. The 60,000 is irrelevant.
Thank you. You were next, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, yeah. Andrew Moser, Sandy Pine Road, speaking as a private citizen and as somebody who would like to see the kitchen get funded at the Senior Center. The truth is, if the money comes from free cash has been proposed, then something else gets cut. Something else has to give. It's all done through a budget process that's already more or less been completed, and we talked about it last town meeting. There were some things that were done at last town meeting in the fall that I thought were great, that we put a bunch of extra money into stabilization funds, and that was very prudent. One of the reasons that I offer my time is because I want to be prudent with everyone's money, including my own, as a town resident. The truth is that the Select Board proposed using capital stabilization because we don't have the money to do this otherwise. It would be financially irresponsible for us to spend money that we don't have. So I strongly urge that we use capital stabilization to fund this and get this done for the seniors. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Gail Noel, 87 Winchester Street. And yes, there are indications that we will get this money. But it's not up, it, there are indications, there are strong indications, but I can't speak about that any further, because we don't have the money in hand. But there are indications, and there are actions happening in the background. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments on the amendment to Article 2? Okay. We're going to go to vote on the amendment to Article 2 that Mr. May presented, not the original Article 2 that read. I will read this amendment, so everyone's clear that this amendment is what you're voting on. If you pass it, it will become part of Article 2. If you fail it, we will go back to Article 2 as it was originally written, just so everyone's clear. And his amendment was, "I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $175,000 and no cents for the construction of the kitchen at the Templeton Senior Center, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of $175,000 and no cents from certified free cash." That's what we're going to vote on right now. And again, if it passes, it becomes part of Article 2 that we will then vote on. If it fails, we go back to the original article that we started with. So everyone's clear. All right, all in favor of the amendment to Article 2, say yes.
Yes!
All opposed, say no.
No!
Okay, the amendment to Article 2 failed at 6:59. Okay, so we're back to Article 2 as it originally was written.
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, please.
Justice Graves, Queen Lake Road. I have a question directed towards Town Council for you, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
The warrant, as it is written, states that this is a majority vote required for using capital stabilization. Can we just have clarification? In the past, I know that we've, it's been a two-thirds vote for any stabilization fund, so is it a majority vote, or is it a two-thirds vote?
Okay, give me a second.
Two-thirds is a minority.
Hi, Ryan Holmquist, Town Council. So in the past, that's correct, any state appropriation out of a stabilization fund would have required a two-thirds vote. There's been a somewhat recent change to the law that says any special purpose stabilization fund only requires a majority vote to appropriate from.
Did that answer your question, please, sir?
Yeah, I, so, just, can I have a follow-up?
Ah, yes, go ahead with the follow-up.
So capital stabilization is considered a special stabilization fund? Is, so that's why it's allowed? Okay, all right, I'm, I'm good with that answer.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
The original warrant was stated, $175,000 to be transferred. The article as read by Selectman Revard said up to $175,000. So that's what we should be voting on, is a sum up to $175,000.
Yes, it says, I'll, actually, I'll just read Article 2 again since we've been going around and around. So Article 2 says, "I move to appropriate the sum of up to $175,000 and no cents from the CapEx capital stabilization account to be used for the completion of the Senior Center kitchen." Go ahead, sir.
Dennis O'Brien, 259 Ballinville Road. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, you got a second, all right. We've been over this already, so I think everyone knows, we're going to, if you vote yes to move the question, we'll go to Article 2 and vote on that. All in favor to move the question, say yes.
Yes!
All opposed, say no. Okay, move the question, passed at 7:03. Okay, we're going to go to vote on Article 2. All in favor, say yes.
Yes!
All opposed, say no.
No!
Okay, Article 2 passed at 7:03. Okay, up next is Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Farrell, 24 Myrtle Street in Ballinville. I would like to read this motion and give you a copy of it, with an explanation after I've finished reading.
Okay, it's the original, it's the original Article 3, though, in the, that's in the book?
It's, that's what I need to explain.
Because we have to do the original, the warrant article that is in here has to be presented first, before any amendments to it or changes can be made.
It's not an amendment.
Okay.
Okay? This is, I'll read the motion, and then you can decide if it's amendment or not. I've got both ways covered. "I move to see that if the town will vote to add additional sections to the solid waste management bylaw as follows. Article 2, regulated technologies, solid waste handling and processing. Section 220 dash, 2 dash 1, regulated technologies. Notwithstanding technologies, notwithstanding, regulated technologies shall not be used in any form, including but not limited to the use of plastics or used tires as fuel or fuel substitute, or the general use of plastics or used tires in energy production. For the purposes of this section, regulated technologies shall include but not be limited to gasification, pyrolysis, solvalis, solvalisis, hydropyrolysis, methanolysis, enzymatic breakdown combustion, or any other process used to transform plastic or plastic derived materials into plastic monomers, chemicals, waxes, lubricants, chemical feedstocks, crude oil, diesel, gasoline, or home heating oil. A, a person shall not use, facilitate, or otherwise deploy regulated technologies in the town of Templeton. B, a person shall not build, construct, establish, or operate any facilities that use regulated technologies in the town of Templeton. The prohibition of this subsection shall apply to the modification or conversion of any existing non-covered facilities in the town of Templeton into facilities that use regulated technologies. No person shall recover any tax breaks, oh, shall receive any tax breaks or any other financial or non-financial incentives to support the development of facilities that use regulated technologies or programs focused on regulated technologies. Section 222 dash 2, restrictions and prohibitions on solid waste treatment, handling, and processing. A, solid waste as defined in Section 222 dash 2 may in the future be redefined as material, feedstock, commodities, or the like. Nevertheless, being the same material by a different name, these may pose hazardous, hazards, and risks when treated, handled, or processed. These include release of hazardous pollutants into environment, toxic particulate matter readily inhaled or absorbed through contact, yeah, contact, risks of fire, and contamination of water. B, notwithstanding such solid waste by any name in the future is prohibited from transport to any property in the town of Temple to be handled, processed, or treated for the purpose of what is now defined under Section 129 of the Clean Air Act as incineration. This is prohibited even if incineration is later defined as manufacturing, treatment, handling, or processing. Also prohibited is the application of heat, pressure, chemicals, or other treatments to solid waste if significant result is to extract fuel or precursors to the fuel, to fuel for the purpose of energy generation or any step in making fuel. Stockpiling material for such purposes is prohibited." Could I have a second? Thank you.
Okay, uh, all right, we got a, did we get a second on that?
Sure.
We did, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Advisory, recommendation, or not, as I know it is.
As this is a citizens petition, advisory makes no recommendation either way.
Okay, thank you. Julie, you have anything else to say on that?
I do, I do. The reason why we submitted this article with the beginning of solid waste management, okay, was to show where it would slide into the bylaws, okay, or the codification process. When you look at solid waste management, Article 1, all right, does everyone have their warrant in front of them?
We do, we're, no.
All right, if you didn't get one, I'm sorry. It says sanitary landfill adopted January 15th, 2020, special town meeting by Article 1. It appears as if we just had this article voted on four years ago. This is untrue. This is untrue. Okay? The solid waste management article has been around since 1975. During the codification process, a number of things were left out of many bylaws. This is just one of them. The history of this goes back a very long way. Fortunately, after much digging in my house, I found the old bylaw book before codification from 2005. All right? In this bylaw book, it has the original article as written, when it was adopted, when it was approved by the Attorney General. All of that is missing from this codification... This bylaw. So the reason why I submitted it the way I did was so you knew where it was going to slide in, okay? But this bylaw, in the first part that I did not read, my motion is for the second page, okay, for Article 3. That's what I just wrote. That is my motion, okay? And that is the motion I submitted, and it was seconded, and I hope you support. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Beverly Bartolomeo, 686 South Road, Templeton. First of all, I am going to take a little... Shut your eyes, shut your ears. Thank you, everyone, for coming. You have done my heart good. Thank you for all the people that worked so hard to get this together. We have gone the route... Julie came in a little later with trying to stop stuff from coming into our town. I know our border health girl has worked hard on this, too. Thank you, Laurie. I said this was the most important meeting that you're going to attend, and I am not kidding you, because your property values would go down the tube, Bass and Nova Man Box. I don't want bad air, bad water to affect anybody any more than it has. Temple Stewart, I used to bring my ex-husband. I used to pick him up from work. We never dreamed that Temple Stewart would do anything to hurt us. But the whole neighborhood is full of cancer. People suffered. I was so afraid no one would show up, and a lot of the young people couldn't, because they were on Route 2 and 495 at 6 o'clock at night. We've got to do something about that. But vote for this tonight. I knew you came for a reason. Thank you for coming from the bottom of my heart, and pray to God we can keep all this stuff out of town. We don't need it. If we're going to have business, we're going to have clean business.
Any more questions or comments on Article 3? Bev, I took that as just a comment that you were just making. Any more questions or comments on Article 3? Okay. Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to go to vote on Article 3. All in favor of Article 3, say yes.
Yes!
All opposed, say no. Okay, Article 3 passed unanimously at 7:13.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dissolve the town meeting.
Can I get a second? Second. Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes!
All opposed, say no.
No!
Okay, the special town meeting is ended. Thank you.